I'll call the town of Northwood Planning Board Meeting of January 24, 2019 to order at 6:30. Present, Hal Kreider, select persons are up, Beth Bugrow, Betty Smith, Vice Chair Lee Oldman, Chair Bob Stroll, town staff. We have minutes of January 3, and I entertain a motion.
Still move.
Second.
Any discussion? And I'm going to assume, because I didn't have the language with me, that we got the little tweaks we talked about in...
Yes.
Okay. Because I know it was all copy and paste from PDF, which is...
Well, I did the minutes, so I'm for sure.
Yes, definitely.
I didn't see anything that looked out of place. Okay, hearing no discussion, ready for... All those in favor of the minutes as written, say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, those abstaining, and after the fact for the record, the voting designation is all members present. Okay. Oh, that's right, we're doing the public hearing on...
Does that one?
So for tonight, first issue, we have a pub... Second public hearing. No, first public hearing. No, it is second.
Second hearing.
It is the public hearing now. They start to run together. Second public hearing on zoning amendment six, which is, deals with the seasonal dwelling unit, essentially adding that as a justified use to the table of uses and defining...
Adding it as a defined term, that we are adding it to the table of uses as a permitted use in column one, so allowed pretty much any place that single-family residential or two-family residential would be allowed. And then we have added a section under nonconformity regarding the expansion and conversion of seasonal dwellings from a seasonal nature to a year-round residence.
Right. Okay. So at this time, I'll take public comment, if you have any on zoning amendment six. The only thing I ask is that you use the microphone. Going once, going twice. Okay. We'll close public comment on the... Actually, we'll close the public hearing on zoning amendment six. Okay. Continued case of 18-13, Ledgewood Realty Trust, Millstone Realty Trust.
Should we vote on that now, so we don't forget?
Oh, yes, to send it to ballot. Good point.
I just would hate to forget it, and then I can't go.
Yep, okay. Motion to move zoning amendment six and second by Betty Smith and Hal Kreider to move zoning amendment six to the ballot as written. Discussion? None. All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, those abstaining? Okay.
Thank you.
Thank you for the reminder. Okay, now we'll get the case 18-13. Do we have anything from the applicant on 18-13?
Uh, no.
Yeah, somewhere here. It's in my pile of papers.
Or did they give us other stuff?
No. Our request for continuance, but I had it right here, and now it's...
Oh, I saw it on the...
Well, will we take your word for it?
Let's not do it.
Hold on a second.
But we have it, it's somewhere.
I told you about it yesterday.
Oh, there it is.
Okay.
There it is.
Thank you. Whoa.
That's okay. Okay, I have a letter from Holden Engineering and Surveying Incorporated, January 21, 2018.
Thank you, James.
Now, I'll just read it into the record. Linda Smith, Board Administrator. Dear Linda, attached is a letter addressed to the Board of Selectmen requesting a payment schedule for a planning board application fee. I would appreciate it if you would forward that to the Board. If the Board would like, I would like, I would be more than happy to meet with them to explain the project and the fee. In addition, I have been work, we have been working on the plans, but have not progressed as far as I had anticipated with the bridge design. We will be finishing those plans by the end of this week, so we can send them to the reviewer for the town. Because we have not submitted those plans to the reviewer as of this letter, I would request that the planning board postpone the meeting scheduled for November 24, 2019, I assume January 24, to the February meeting date, which I believe is February 28, 2019. This would give the reviewer time to review the plans and would actually give us some time to react to the reviewer's additional comments. If you have any questions in this matter, please do not hesitate to contact me. Sincerely, Peter Holden. So the applicant has requested a continuance for the end of February. Would you like to handle that? I believe that would put us beyond the 65-day timeframe.
That was the question, what happens then? Do we have...
Well, they've requested a continuance, and if we don't accept the continuance, we would need to vote tonight on the application, based on the information they presented so far.
Is there any detriment to letting them continue?
Nope, it's up to the Board.
Well, I'll make a motion to let them continue.
Second.
So, motion to continue the 18-13 to the February 29, 2019 meeting. Got it. Discussion? Hearing none. All those in favor of the motion by Mr. Kreider and second by Ms. Smith, say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, those abstaining? Okay, we're continued to the February 29.
So, Bob, can I just go back to that? So, what does that do to the quote clock in this case?
Uh...
I mean, does that put our backs up against the wall more? Okay, so as long as...
Because they requested a... Essentially, a good question, because once the clock expires, we continue it to the 29th. If a decision is not made that evening, the... Who then requests it the next month? We continue, the Board continues?
No.
Or they request a continuance?
They have to request.
They have to keep requesting continuance since once the 65-day clock is out. Okay.
Yeah, I think as long as the applicant is amenable to continuing to extend, there should be no problem.
Right.
If we are at the next meeting and there is disagreement, it would be an appeal to the Board of Selectmen to be able to continue it. Technically, that would require going even further over the deadline to get to Select Board's next meeting to request that extension. But conversely, the enforcement mechanism would be for the applicant to go to the Select Board at the Select Board's next meeting and ask them to tell us that we have to ask, act at the next meeting.
Okay.
So...
So, either way...
Even if we were in disagreement...
Yeah, it's going to get kicked at the next meeting.
Both mechanisms would be Select Board's next meeting, Planning Board's next meeting.
Okay.
Okay.
Thank you.
Mr. Chairman, if I could add a comment. I did send a request to be on the agenda for them for February 12 relative to the request for the schedule of payments.
Oh, for the Board of Selectmen meetings?
So, hopefully, you know, that'll be addressed by the Selectmen on that night, so we'll know by the next meeting.
Okay.
And that part of it'll be taken care of. They have actually, in the letter, I'll just say that in the letter requesting that schedule of payments, I'll forward that to James, too, that just came in, is, instead of doing the phasing, they are requesting a single payment upfront and then a payment a year for a number of years, which I think is actually personally a better way, because you can enforce it so much easier, and you're not, it's not a moving target on a certain date, it's due.
Right, yeah. You don't have to check where they are, and did they open up section B, or...
Right, right.
That's fair.
It's a very more reasonable approach.
So, Linda, just to make sure, they aren't asking for a reduction?
They are not.
Okay.
I read the letter, they are not asking for a reduction.
Well, because we had said it'd be kind of hard to, you know, reduce it and face the voters, I mean...
Okay. Okay, thank you for that. Next case is 18-20, 168 Granite Street Properties. The last month, on December meeting, the applicant said their engineer cannot be here, so they requested a... Delay in discussion, let's use that term, for completeness, because we have not accepted the application as complete, so we should take that back up, as far as completeness goes. You should have another copy of James's notes for 18-20.
There are no updates to the staff report, it's the same draft as of December 7, but I made more copies because it's been a month and a half, so I wanted to make sure everybody had a copy.
Thank you.
The only change I will make, as I was looking back through this, is number four, road length, currently reads Section 3B states that no point along a road shall be less than 1,000 feet from a single access point, changed less to more.
Oh. Okay.
That makes better sense.
Yeah, it does, yeah.
Yeah.
Have we understood the...
There should be more copies if we can send them back around.
Can you get those copies coming back around this way? Are there extras there?
These?
Of the notes?
Of the review notes.
Yeah.
Oh, you don't have to get up. Thank you.
Okay. Discussion on completeness?
Thank you.
Doesn't necessarily have to have a motion, but is there, as yet, but it's more the idea that, is there, there are things that are missing from the application as submitted currently, and James has pointed out some of them, if not all of the things that are missing, but it's a question of whether that's enough to call into question completeness.
Well, refresh my memory, Bob, but I think at the last meeting when we talked about this, I said I thought the drawings were in pretty good shape, but I thought you had said that there were some things that you were interested in seeing, and I don't remember that we discussed them in detail, but I see a color copy in front of you.
Someone was busy with his highlighters.
It was not me. This was here tonight. I appreciate whoever made it. Thank you.
So, does this help address some of your questions, or are there other things that you were concerned about?
The... Because you have a question. The question is complete, for my pers, for me personally, there are things that I would like to see, but they are there partially, and I'm okay with the content that is there enough to open the application myself, but I won't speak for anybody else.
Well, I've already said I thought there was sufficient, so I'm okay.
It's submitted, I never saw one.
So, I'm okay proceeding to get into the meat of this, but just to make sure of the case, because there isn't a lot going on, and...
Oh, Susan's got it. She's been hiding her goods.
I'd say there were, the drawings are somewhat difficult to put all the information together.
Yeah, we had the same issue with the previous one, too.
Yep.
It's fine, as long as it's...
It's not impossible, it just takes...
Yeah, and this helps quite a bit.
Definitely.
This helps.
Thank you, Linda. You did a nice job.
Yep. Okay, so I entertain a motion, then.
Still move.
Second?
I'll second it.
Okay, so, motion for, to find a application complete for Ms. Smith and second by Mr. Kreider. Discussion on completeness? Too much?
No.
No, no, just one, not enough, when you go over that way.
Oh, wow.
That's why.
Sorry.
Oh, you got two.
He's doubling up tonight.
When he's moving around, you know.
Yeah.
Hearing none. All those in favor of finding 18-20 complete, say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, those abstaining? Okay. So that sets the 65-day clock, there it is, starting. I'll open case 18-20. And soon as I find it.
Looking for a butter.
It's in the back?
There it is.
There it is.
I think it's just two pages.
Okay, yep, I see it now.
Ignore the highlighting, that's just...
Okay. I'll read the butters list. If you are in the audience, please raise your hand and say something, so I know you're here when I call your name, or your names. Representative of NFDC Holdings, Lori Smith Cascaden and Robyn Smith of Northwood, David Shermer of Northwood, Jennifer Gonzalez of Northwood, Randy Ramsell of Northwood, Brandon and Christine Albert of Northwood, John Ward of Meredith, 168 Properties, Granite Street Properties is the applicant as well, Kim Gendron of Pelham, Johnson Family Revocable Trust of Northwood, James Lutz of Northwood, Richard and Sarah Shaw of Northwood, Brian and Joanna Cody of Northwood, Jeffrey and Tricia Tenley of Northwood, Matthew Osborne of Northwood, Jason Bligh of Northwood, Pamela Sanderson of Northwood. Thank you.
Okay, we got one.
There are some I recognize. I wasn't going to let her go. And just for the record, in case there's any question from members of the audience or the Board, I am an a-butter, two-in-a-butter. Pam is my neighbor. I am not an actual butter of this property. Pardon me?
Yeah. We'll hear that on Saturday Night Line.
Some twister, a butter, a butter.
Well, I like to be clear as to where I am with the relationship, as far as the land this is in my neighborhood. Michael Fiala of Northwood, who is also an a-butter of mine, Patricia Kane of Massachusetts. And just so I'm clear, the other members of the public who are not a-butters, are you here for this application? Okay. We'll have, we'll open up public comment later, but I'd just like to know who's here for what business. Thank you. Have I represented the applicant here?
Yes.
Oh, there we are. Okay. Sorry, I should have...
This group right here.
Okay. Well, bring your group to the table.
Are there two gentlemen in the back?
That's fine.
I don't think so.
Because there was some additions to that list, and I'm not sure you have the most current.
That's mine, that's the most current.
Oh, that is the most current?
Yeah, that was the one that you gave it, so I highlighted it. So, can you even go with this?
Maybe whoever's who again, it's just something else.
I thought it was the other way around.
Correct, it doesn't. Okay.
Yeah, I have to get rid of that out of the...
Okay.
I remember now, yeah.
Try not to spill that. Welcome. Why don't you introduce yourselves and give us an overview of what you'd like to do?
Okay, well, my name's Mark Sargent. I'm a landscape area with the firm of Richard Bartlett and Associates, and I'm here tonight representing Granite Street Properties. Jeff, Eames, in the background is the owner of the property. Also in the audience, Chris Nadal from Novus Engineering, and John Newman, who works with me. Naomi Praul is with Novus Engineering, and Cindy Belcius of Stony Ridge is our wetland scientist.
I know you, and I know you. Say your name again, please.
Naomi Praul.
How do you spell that?
It's N-A-O-M-I, and the last name is P-R-A-U-L. Thank you.
I know how to spell it.
No, I spelled it enough.
So, what's your expertise, please?
Engineering, simple engineer.
So, you ready for us to continue?
Yes, go ahead.
Okay, so, we're here this evening speaking about a lot identified on map 108 is lot 102. It's on the north side of the first New Hampshire Turnpike. I've got the plan up there, a larger, kind of put-together version of what you've put together there. It's across from Lake Shore Drive and Northwood Lake, and a small portion of the property, located just along Route 4, is actually in the shoreline protection district. The property runs from Route 4 all the way back to Old Turnpike Road. Flat Meadow Brook runs through the rear of the property near Old Turnpike Road, and there's three out parcels from prior subdivisions that you can probably pick out on your own there. The property has a total area of 43.82 acres. So, the proposal before the Board this evening is a single-family home, 16-lot subdivision. 14 of the lots will be accessed via a new road, which runs off of Route 4. Two of the lots are going to be accessed off of Old Turnpike Road. We spent considerable time analyzing this parcel and believe that what we have proposed is respectful of the existing character of the area and the terrain and the wetlands on the property. We actually presented this concept before this Board back five years ago now, I think. Time seems to fly, yeah.
I remember that, I think it's been twice now.
What, I'm sorry?
Thank you, I think it came twice.
Twice, yeah. And...
I'm dating myself.
Doug Greiner from G2 Plus One is a landscape architect, he's the one that came up with this layout. Our thinking on this was, a majority of the development would be in the middle of the site and away from Flat Meadow Brook, less visible from both Route 4 and Old Turnpike Road. The proposed road is to be designed, or is designed to town standards, has a total length of 2,353 feet. The start of the loop, there, the intersection, I guess, is just shy of 1,000 feet. The location and configuration was based on maximizing site distance at Route 4 and avoiding impacts to the shoreline protection zone, which is further east, and avoiding impacts to the Flat Meadow Brook area. Construction of the road will require two wetland impacts, and Cindy has analyzed those, and I'm going to let her kind of jump in here and speak to those.
So, the two proposed wetland impacts, the first one is for the road crossing for 1,240 square feet, and, yeah, you have the right one right there. And you'll notice, that is actually an existing road on site, so we're changing out, I think it's an existing 18-inch culvert, and we're going to replace it with a 24-inch. That wetland is a forested wetland drainage, it doesn't have a defined channel, it is not a stream, so we, it's kind of like a swale in design, and I do have some photos if you wanted to see it. The second proposed impact is to the wetland, right at the top, right after and before the round loop. And that wetland is a forested wetland pocket, the impact would be 5,730 square feet of wetland. We have had the ability over the last five years to monitor through April and May, and it is not a vernal pool, and we indeed had our site walk with the ZBA and Concom during, you know, the prime season for vernal pools this year as well. It's a forested wetland with, basically for functions and values, it's considered a lower value because its main function is wildlife habitat. The main wetland on site is the wetland associated with Flat Meadow Brook. That is a high-value and high-functioning wetland system that, we do a functional assessment of the wetlands that we want to impact, and when we go down and we did Flat Meadow Brook, you know, we checked off every box except for two out of 10 functions and values. So, when Mark started designing this, he had initially looked at trying to bring a road up over there, and I was the one that said, no. You want to stay from that area over there, it needs to be protected along that lines. And so, we avoided that and came in from the other side to minimize any potential environmental impacts. So, the total proposed impact for this project would be 6,970 square feet, and that's considered a minor wetland impact, and we are in the process of putting together the wetland application to the state right now.
So, they'll, yeah, they'll have a say in that.
Oh, yeah, they'll review it and go through it. It's not a major impact, it's a minor, there's no mitigation involved or anything like that.
Bob, excuse me, what was our sort of threshold, or was that for steep slopes, that we talked about, 1,000 square feet?
That's steep slope.
Okay. Ignore that question.
No, it's okay. Sorry. So, if you have any other questions regarding the wetlands, I can stand up with the plan and go over them if you'd like, if you want to kind of lay the land, but that's up to you.
I know Hal and I were on the site walk, so we're...
Yeah, yeah, I know exactly what you're talking about there, yeah.
I know the, I believe you covered, at that site walk, all of the wetland crossings for the road.
So, we, you know, you mentioned that the steep slopes, we did have, we do have some impacts to slopes and obviously to the wetlands, and I'm sure you're aware that, you know...
One second while we're...
Sure, okay.
Just for my own self. The, you mentioned the idea of putting in, mixing the idea of putting in the road to impact with Flat Meadow Brook, is there a setback on that, or is it just a general guideline to say, we want to keep everything away from this, as opposed to a picking a number, 150-foot setback?
Yeah, no, that's a, that's a good question. When, when I'm doing wetland permitting and we're preparing a wetland application, we have to come under the guidelines of avoidance and minimization. So, it's a balance of your piece of property and what's on there as far as environmentally sensitive areas. So, I'm going to point and say, you know, this area is a high-function value wetland, so we want to avoid over there, and we want to minimize the impacts to the other wetlands, the now-est crossing possible, design the crossing based on the type of wetland and what functions and values you want to protect. So, we go through that whole stepwise process, so there is no, you know, buffer per se to it, but we wanted to avoid the whole area.
Did I answer my question? Sorry, thank you for the interruption, but go ahead. No worries. Was there anything else on the wetlands before I...
Wes and Bill said anything? Well, I have one question, don't go into a lot of detail, but how do you make sure it's not a vernal pool, or just a...
Oh, sure. So, in our state of New Hampshire, in the spring, in April and May, there are several, there are several species of, in particular, wood frog and spotted salamander, and we call them primary vernal pool species, and during that season, between April and May, it's their breeding season. So, if indeed something can be classified as a vernal pool, we're going to go out there and monitor to see if it has those major species, those primary species.
That's what you did over the course of seven years.
Yeah, yep, that's what we do, and for a lot of jobs, you're not, we don't... And for a lot of jobs, you're not, we don't, we only get one look. In this one, it's been going so long that we've had many looks.
Okay, so I just want to make sure, so that one in the middle there, that's basically just going to get filled in?
Yes.
Okay. And then in terms of impact on the brook, which is the upper wetlands there, what about the housing and the position of the housing, are there restrictions on that?
Well, I think when you, when you look at the way the plan has been designed, the houses are away from the wetland proper. And the drainage plan that Naomi has developed takes into consideration any potential water quality or runoff issues by intercepting that and treating prior to any discharge. And Naomi can talk to, you know, what they've done in design to take away any concern on that.
Okay, so along those lines, does this drawing, and I guess it's a question for you, Bob, does, does their drawing showing the house location become a requirement as to where the lot owner must put their house? Because, I mean, we're talking about sensitive areas here and stuff, and I guess I want to understand that.
I'm smiling because that is one of the difficulties I have with our subdivision regulations. To my knowledge, correct me if I'm wrong, we only require locating a well, the well setback, and a four thousand foot septic area, plus all the, you know, lot line setbacks, wetland setbacks and stuff to that effect. But we ask to show the driveway to make sure that it's possible. But to my knowledge, we do not require a house location for our subdivision plans.
Okay, so does the state have stipulations that restrict where the house can go?
No, no, the state does not.
As you're pertaining to setbacks from wetlands?
That, and then like Cindy mentions, maybe even some consideration for how it drains and things like that.
The state does, through the alteration of terrain permit program, they do look at drainage.
Do you have to get an alteration of terrain for this one?
We do.
Okay.
Do.
That was really my only concern, but if it's not something that we really have jurisdiction of, or we shouldn't belabor the point.
We, Naomi presented on her plan, and I've since incorporated it onto our subdivision plan here, just some suggested house locations and clearing limits. And then analyze the drainage from those, so, and the impact it would have, so...
Yeah, just to add on to that, we did have to make some assumptions about the size of the homes that would go in, and then the cleared areas associated with that. And the reason for that is just to do a comprehensive stormwater model that will account for those cleared areas and that additional impervious cover.
So I think to, because you and I, I think, share that comment on the house locations. If the applicant has tied in already stormwater analysis and, well, it wouldn't be wetlands analysis, but stormwater is dependent on this design, any changes to, I'm going to use this one as an example, because this, what I'm showing is sheet C2, which shows the driveway, the house lots, or proposed house lots. This is what they're being held to if we approve it, going any changes.
Okay, so hold that thought, Bob, I want to make sure I understand. So you've done some analysis on stormwater and drainage and all that type of stuff?
Based on this?
Based on that, which makes some assumptions about where the house is sitting, the lots, how much is cleared and all that type of stuff. So if somebody goes to build on that lot, must they stay below those runoff and other criteria that they have used for the design?
Well, it would end up being that the performance of the stormwater management plan would be impacted by, the design is based on this. If the as-builts are, differ significantly from this, that could throw off the stormwater management plan. And how would we have...
It could be... If it did, there would need to be an enforcement mechanism to reduce that flow based on the way it was built. I'm not a stormwater engineer, so I could not speak to how likely that would be to happen.
I would ask you to...
Or the extent of how much house you'd have to put in to significantly alter. I would note that, in a sense, the houses that are shown on here typically for a subdivision are an illustration that the lot is buildable.
Correct.
Because you would not want to create an unbuildable lot. But beyond that, if the house expands a little bit, shrinks a little bit, changes shape, changes location, that's not something that we would enforce as, as a requirement in, of these plans, that they have to match exactly where the houses are. It's for illustration purposes.
Let me say where I'm coming from. So like the lot over closest to your, yeah, whatever that is, your right, I guess, huh?
So...
Yeah, so let's just assume that that person decides that he'd like a view of the brook and basically deforests the steep slopes, which means that the, you know, the runoff down into the brook will just, you know, erode down the steep slopes and a lot of silt and stuff down through there. It'd clearly be different than what you designed, and I'm worried about that if we don't have some kind of means of protecting the fragile. I mean, she just, Cindy just talked about, it's a high, high-value thing. And I'm a little uncomfortable, just not, I mean, I don't know what jurisdiction we have, but I'm concerned that folks will do maybe something that isn't in the best interest of that stream. Especially given that there's steep slopes where you generate a lot of liquid and velocity and all that kind of stuff.
And I believe the steep slopes one side toward Flat Meadow Brook are largely ledge. Is that correct?
Don't know if there, there is some ledge out there, yeah.
I sort of remember, I don't, my memory's not good enough to talk about that. I don't, but that's really the type of thing, I mean, because you see it at a couple places there where it's steep slopes that head down towards the brook. And if there's some means that we can even just add notes or something to convey the concern there, I don't know what, whether we have jurisdiction on some of those, but we should be making people aware of those considerations, so that, you know...
I believe your ordinance addresses steep slopes and what you can and can't do with those. So, I mean, that does afford some protection, because there is, they're in orange there, are what the, steep slopes.
So right currently, there's no impacts allowed on steep slopes, or twenty-five percent?
Exactly, but, you know, that becomes an enforcement action.
Okay, well, that's, that's a good, I think that's a good point, so, okay. But that's my concern.
Okay.
And we'll certainly take that into consideration, right?
Yeah, I mean, I mean, sometimes, maybe it's, sometimes the government doesn't have to have a big hammer. Sometimes it's just, you know, letting people know what the sensitivity is. And people generally do the right thing.
Could be something like a neighborhood association covenant or something that goes along with those. I think what might be helpful, and I'm just throwing this out there as a, as a thought, I haven't, it's only half baked at this point, might be to list either on the plans or in documents or something, the assumptions made for the stormwater management plan as far as square feet of impervious surface, what areas are, or how much area is, is...
Clear.
Clear, thank you, that's the word I was looking for. Got ahead of myself. Just to, so that somebody buying the lot says, this is what our stormwater management plan is based on.
Yeah, that, I mean, that's a good suggestion, Bob.
It's not that we'd have no enforcement mechanism for that, but it might be helpful for a developer, when they're actually building, to come in and say, this is what the stormwater management plan is based on. If you exceed this much, that puts our, that might have an impact on our stormwater management plan, which rolls into bigger things.
I think that's a good point.
Just, and again, it's a thought out there.
I like that.
Other comments from the board, questions?
Regarding wetlands, right.
Sorry, what, wetlands?
I think everything else is pretty clear.
All right, so, just to continue on, that's all right. You know, we talked about steep slopes, we talked about wetlands, and I'm sure you're all aware that we did receive a special exception from the zoning board to, for those impacts that we are making on a few of those back in May.
I think that was on a note on one of the drawings, just to make sure.
During the ZBA meeting, there were concerns expressed about the drainage from the roadway as well as the development, we discussed that a little bit. Pam, you know, has some concerns and brought those forth.
Just because I was not there at that meeting, does the drainage easement you have in the corner where, of course, Bronson Drive comes in to Route 4, does that exist already, that easement?
No. Well, and I was going to let Naomi kind of explain the road drainage to you. She's got some drawings here, then...
Love drawings.
Yeah, that is beyond what the subdivision shows. But to answer your question, you know, if the development is approved, we'd create those easements.
They were, only reason I ask, they were shown on the existing site conditions?
Oh, well, I probably forgot to turn that layer off.
Which is, which is...
Yeah, okay.
Drawing blueprints or mistakes or things put on the wrong layer never, never the sort of casting of the voice. But that's why, that's the only reason I ask.
I do have a question on the steep slopes, it's more of an informational thing.
Sure.
I don't know if you were aware that we also have some steep slopes changes to our ordinances.
Proposed.
Proposed, yes.
The application, and then before it, so it doesn't come impact.
I know.
Okay.
But I'm wondering, how big are some of these areas? Because what we're thinking about are what's proposed to the town for a change is to, what's the word, exclude a thousand square feet or less from consideration?
Two thousand.
Two thousand. So I'm just curious, looking at your road, I see, you know, coming in, there might be some. But what about those other areas, how big are they?
Let me give you an example. These squares?
Yes.
Are four thousand square feet.
Four thousand square feet, so, okay, so some of these...
Your septic squares are four thousand.
Yeah, so we could be easing some of the issues for folks, like around the upper part of...
There's a few small ones that, you know, those pockets, like in the roadway, yeah, those are certainly under four thousand. And the one that's, yeah, that, that one, yeah, we wouldn't have needed a special exception for those if that was, was in place, but, I mean, it's...
Okay, I'm just trying to get some sense on a real-life example.
You know, in a steep slope, it's interesting, because you can go out to a site, and I've gone out with many planning boards, and this is a little bit different. You do have kind of a nice slope where you kind of come up onto the plateau up here, down where the road is. But you get into some of these other areas, and I'll, you know, I'll take a planning board out there and I say, you know, what do you think we're standing on for a slope here, unless they all ten, five percent, it's twenty-five percent. You know, it's deceiving.
Well, some of those were hard to find, I know we had trouble on the hike finding some of them.
But anyway, I was going to allow Naomi to talk about the roadway drainage and...
Okay. I don't know if you all have plans, but this one that Cindy has put in the center for us is sheet C2. I don't know...
Which, I'm sorry, say that again.
C2?
C2.
The one that shows the driveway. Any change from...
Nope.
Just double check.
Should be the same one you have. So this sheet basically just gives you a picture of the roadway in its entirety. We had also provided plan and profile sheets, but that breaks it up a little bit more, so this, I think, is easier to read. Just to give you a little overview of how the stormwater on the site works, this sheet, I don't know if you can all see that in the front, is part of what we do for our stormwater analysis. That basically breaks down the different water sheds that exist on the site. And that's based on the topography. Obviously, water flows downhill, so we're looking at areas that contribute to certain, we call them points of interest or points of compliance. We're held to a standard where we need to not have exceedances of post-development stormwater at, basically at property lines, at the limits of our development and our property. So this shows you how things are broken up today in the existing conditions and where the water flows. We basically have stormwater that runs off all sides of this site. We have Flat Meadow Brook, we have water that runs towards Route 4 and then into the lake. We have a small corner on this side of the site that runs off towards the abutters, and then there's a little wedge here that just runs off to the east. So we've evaluated points of compliance on all of those sides. In order to comply, we have to mitigate any increase in flow that is a result of the new impervious cover from the houses and from the roads. Specifically, we are required by the state to provide treatment for runoff from road surfaces. So what we're proposing, we have a detention basin located within the center of the cul-de-sac. That bulb of the cul-de-sac is all super-elevated and pitches inward towards the center, so all of that runoff from, from that portion of the road makes its way to that detention basin. That detention basin is what we call a wet pond, which means it holds water all the time. And the reason for that is so the water can sit in there and receive treatment, any of the pollutants. Sediments will settle out and pollutants are taken up by vegetation that exists in there. And then when it reaches a certain elevation, it spills out of the pond and continues on down the road.
So you call that a wet?
We call it a wet pond, yeah.
Pond, okay. So do you grow catanine tails in there, or what do you?
It may develop that way, because it will be, like I said, it'll be, it's designed to be wet all the time. And as you know, wetlands are, we're not allowed to use wetlands as treatment, wetlands that exist today. But certainly, they're a wonderful mechanism for treatment of stormwater. And so we try to promote that kind of vegetation.
But you don't have to put anything in to get it started, it'll store by itself?
We will provide a planting list of recommendations for different plants that can survive inundation. So there will be some specifications of plants, probably not cat tails, though, I don't think that, I don't think that's on the list. So there's, oh, sorry.
If I can, what are you talking about? So detention pond two, once it fills, the outflow that goes, stays within D1, essentially goes underneath the north side of Bronson Road and down?
Correct, correct. And then eventually makes its way into Flat Meadow Brook. And just to clarify, Flat Meadow Brook is coming from the north side of Old Turnpike Road. It's flowing onto the property and flowing this way out to the east. So we do have another detention basin, labeled detention basin one, down near Route 4. That is a similar design, it's also going to be a wet pond. And that collects stormwater from essentially the lower portion of the road and provides detention and treatment before that is returned to the closed drainage system in Route 4. So we, what we'll be putting in there is what we call an outlet control structure, which is essentially a glorified catch basin with some, some different outlets at different elevations. And then that will connect to an existing pipe in Route 4.
So how much of the water really drains down that way? Because you have the wet ones crossing there further up as you go in.
Yeah. So if you can look at this, this is the proposed stormwater watershed plan. And you can see, basically, this way down will hit that basin. And like I said, anything, basically from the high point of the road through the cul-de-sac is captured in the other pond. There is a segment of the road between those two areas where water will simply sheet flow off of, off of the pavement and off to the side. There's not a lot we can do to collect in that area, just because we are in a... There's not a lot we can do to collect in that area, just because we are in a fill situation, so it would be difficult to do it.
So, for that lower section, the water will go off a crown and go down both sides, or how's that?
Correct, that's correct. And then each side has a swale, and if you see, if you can look at this plan in area A1A, there is a catch basin in the lowest portion of that swale that will collect that water and direct it over to the other side to the pond.
Okay, so, so on the west side, it comes under the road?
Correct.
And goes down that?
Into that pond, yeah.
Okay. And then, when that gets filled up, it goes out and under Route 4?
Correct.
And that's existing?
There's an existing pipe there that we're planning to connect to.
And does this project change the flow in that pipe?
It does not. So, that is considered a point of compliance. We are required to meet or be less than the existing runoff rate.
Okay, so that applies for all places out?
All of our points of compliance for this.
So, there's no change in what goes under the road?
There may be a change, but it would be less. It wouldn't, it would not be allowed to be more.
Good point, yeah.
Yeah.
Okay, that's fair.
So, just a couple, a couple other things I just want to mention. Those are the two major stormwater controls that we're proposing. You also may have noticed in a few other areas on the site, Lot 6...
Lot 6, hold on, we've got to find that.
The one furthest to the right?
Yes, thank you.
Lot 6 has a little area behind the house location that's shown. That's just a shallow depression that's going to promote, it's going to collect water and promote infiltration. So, that's just a way, if you can see, this is area E1 on the watershed plan, which is almost like its own little area, and that's just a way to have a small thing that mitigates flow, just for that particular watershed area.
So, essentially...
It's a puddle. It will be a puddle, and then it will drain into the ground.
But essentially, it keeps anything that's flowing off of House Lot 6, the impervious areas, or from sheet-flowing down the slope into the wetland?
It will still do that, because it has the ability to fill to a certain point and spill if it needs to. But the hope is, and certainly in smaller storm events, that that water would sit in there and just infiltrate.
Right.
So, there are a couple areas that...
Does the homeowner have any responsibility for maintaining that?
They will. That will have to be protected in an easement, which may be shown. I don't know if those are shown on the...
They are not.
Okay, so that's something we want to make sure is covered.
Yeah. So, there are a couple other locations where we have those. Lot 15?
Where's that one?
Over in the east, is that the western corner? Sorry.
Yeah.
Upside down.
Oh, okay.
That one too?
Yeah.
This one down here?
Yeah.
So, is that responsibility part of the deed or part of Lot sale, or how's that one?
I believe it has to go in the deed.
It would have to be with the deed.
Yeah.
And it wouldn't be a town enforcement responsibility, it'd be a homeowner responsibility, so...
Yeah.
So, there wouldn't be a lot that they would have to do. I mean, obviously, if it's filled up with leaves in the fall, you know, they're going to want to rake those out, because water won't infiltrate through leaves. And basically, you know, they can't put a patio on top of it, I guess.
So, there are two of those on Lot 15?
There are two. There's one just down gradient up the shared driveway.
Okay. The closed oval or loop.
Right. And then, I believe the only other one is on Lot 13, which is not so much related to the lot. It almost falls within the right-of-way. And again, that's just a little collection point to slow the water down before it gets to that wetland.
Okay.
And I believe we show an easement associated with that one, because I think that would be town, part of the town.
Because of the road?
Yeah.
Yeah.
Because it's in the right-of-way, you mean?
Yeah.
Okay. Well, we've got the backhoe with the knuckle now, so we can do that. Right, select me?
Because they have so much more time.
Yeah.
They're going to say no.
Just as an aside, thank you for the graphical explanation. That's very helpful.
You're welcome, yeah.
Much better than...
That's what works for me, too.
A 25-page analysis, which is great.
Yeah.
I've got a degree in civil engineering as well, but I would much rather have a map than a chart of, you know, sheet A, section A1 is, you know, all this number, those numbers. Okay.
Yeah, a picture's worth a thousand words, right? So...
Sometimes.
Yeah.
Most of the time, I agree with you. Sometimes it's 10,000.
So, that's really the overview of the stormwater. If there are any other technical questions on it, I'm happy to answer them.
Without reviewing my own, well, actually, I haven't reviewed mine. Driveways are curved roads with catch basins or just...
Driveways?
Sheet-flow, okay. Just wanted to make sure.
Oh, the driveways are paved or unpaved?
Well, the, I didn't mean the driveways, but the edges of the road have no curbing.
Correct, no curbing.
Just runs... No catch basins that are needed.
But there's no requirement that the driveways remain paved versus unpaved, is there?
The only problem would be the shared driveway that goes through a side setback. Structures are not permitted inside setbacks, paved driveways are structures, and unpaved driveways are not structures, which we are clarifying, or hoping to clarify in the current, during the zoning amendments.
Okay, so let's take that one more step. So, if there are proposed changes pass, the driveway coming in, the shared driveway...
Whether or not the proposed change is pass, that is our current interpretation of the code. We are trying to clean up the language to make that interpretation more apparent.
So, okay, so, but, so...
So, lots 14 and 15, we would consider that should be an unpaved driveway.
Yeah.
Everything else, I believe, as depicted, is outside of the side setback and could be either.
Could be either, okay. Do you understand what we're saying?
I do, yeah.
Or we could have a waiver.
Could have a, is it a waiver or a variance for that?
Would it be a variance?
Be a variance.
That's zoning.
That's zoning, so we require a variance. So, I guess if somebody buys, that lot or a developer buys those two lots, and he decides he wants a waiver, he would have to come before the zoning board to, and we are aware of that.
Okay.
We have these meetings.
And just related to the water runoff and stuff, so I'm looking at some of the drives that have, you know, fair amount of grading to them. Are they crowned, or do they, does the water just flow right down?
Nine in specific.
Well, I'm looking at like Lot 8, you know, there's, you know, the...
Significant.
There's some slope to that.
They may be crowned. I mean, it depends how they construct them. Again, these locations are really just to show that something can work there.
Oh, okay.
They're not, also, if you look, they're not fully graded out. We graded them to the point where, you know, grading beyond that point would be grading the entire lot, and that didn't seem appropriate, I guess, at the time. And that's going to depend on the actual final placement of the building and what everything is going to look like. So, we graded them to a point just to show that they could work.
Okay, okay.
I mean, the construction one that comes in, obviously, somebody's going to want to put a crown on it, because otherwise, they're, you know, water's going to run straight down.
Yeah, so that's not really our jurisdiction either, then? Okay, that's fine.
That's more, if you wanted to call it, would be more safer than anything else, is a building permit.
Yeah.
Okay, so, we went on from the roadway. Going to wrap up here real quick, but we understand there are a couple waivers that we are, are going to be required, and we are working on those now, and that's for the lot width and the roadway length. And I do think we have some, you know, very good arguments for both, and, you know, we'll present those at the next meeting.
Okay.
And we do expect that this is going to take a couple meetings to get through. Applications that we have not applied for yet, because we wanted to meet with you folks before we did, Cindy mentioned the DES wetlands permit, AOT permit, and also, we're going to need a New Hampshire DOT permit. We have met preliminarily with DOT out at that driveway location, and, you know, they gave it a thumbs up, so...
Is there, okay, I see, that's a driveway over here to the east on the opposite side. It's not a road?
Yeah, it's just a driveway there, yeah. And, yeah, if you had any other questions, I guess we'd be happy to attempt to answer them.
While we're talking, you mentioned driveways. I'd be, do you show lots of driveways for 11 and 12?
We, they fell off of Naomi's plans.
Yeah, but you can see...
They are shown there, okay. On that now, and I inserted that layer onto my drawing, so...
Oh, they're off the other road, though?
Right, they're off Old Turnpike. Yeah, because otherwise, you'd be doing a road off a road to get access from this and going up and over a hill, if you, and that was not a design suggestion.
Those are blind...
We don't make those.
So...
Wow, that's another discussion.
So, I just want to make sure I understand, so we have 1,000 feet to here?
Just under 1,000 feet.
Just under 1,000, yeah.
And then, third, what was it?
2,300.
2,353 of total roadway around the cul-de-sac.
Correct.
Or including.
Yeah.
Around the cul-de-sac.
Do you know what the distance is?
That's longer, this circumference is longer than this part?
Hereish.
Well, that does not...
Looking to figure that out.
That's a, what do you call it?
That's a big loop.
Innocence, while we're on that, since we brought it, or someone brought it up, which is fine, could, given that our, and I know you know this, that our regulations are that a, cul-de-sac is no more than 1,000 feet between a, from a alternate point of entrance. So, I'm not making assumptions on your behalf. Can you explain your thinking of meeting the 1,000-foot regulation by having a cul-de-sac?
Well, our thinking on that was the 1,000 feet was, or the point where the cul-de-sac starts is less than 1,000 feet.
Right.
And the idea was, we, Cindy had mentioned earlier, we had flirted with the idea of running a road, you know, down towards, and I can point it out, we had to be down, not maybe pack it flat in the road, but coming down to there and hooking onto Old Turnpike Road. And based on Cindy's advice, we just thought it would be better to protect that resource and not have a road there, and also not introduce more traffic to Old Turnpike Road.
Okay.
That's generally our thinking, but we're working on something that probably cites that more eloquently than I just did, so...
Fine. I could speak, because I'm not a licensed engineer, but I went to school with the engineers, and please don't take this as criticism, engineers are not necessarily known for their eloquence, or their spelling.
I'm only the humble lance of ARSN.
Say that, which I'm sure you know, have experience with, with some engineers who are grammatically and spellingly challenged.
That's why we have spell checker now.
Well, some people don't truly know how to use, okay, sorry.
I'm a dictionary.
Yes. And that's something that the board needs to decide, is whether this application as proposed meets that regulation of the 1,000-foot for a single point of entrance.
Well, you mentioned the, you're allowed to have a cul-de-sac on the end of the 1,000 feet. Is that not correct?
That wasn't my, if I said that, I mistakenly said that, I didn't, I guess I didn't interpret that.
Steph has recommended a waiver to that section be requested. So, my interpretation would be that it does not meet that standard. It would be up to the board to decide whether to waive that standard.
And that's within our jurisdiction or the zoning board's jurisdiction?
That's in subdivision, so that's you.
And we'll be presenting that more formally at the next meeting.
Other questions? I think what I'll do is, this time, unless you have more?
I don't.
It is open to public comment.
Would you like us to step away?
You don't have to.
Nope.
Any members of the public or abutters who would like to speak?
Abutters?
Yes.
A butter?
But all, let me formally, I don't know, that's why we have, that's why you have the other members. So, I'll open case 18-20 to public comment at this time. Just state your name.
Thank you. I am Pam Sanderson. I live at 132 Old Turnpike Road, which you can see is right here on your plan. I am opposite Flat Meadow Brook, and I'm really not pleased, because it's flooding again as we speak, so I'm hoping that I'll be able to make it home, and I'm giving midterms tomorrow morning, so I got to be there. So, I may be running through the woods and knocking on doors going, I need help. I have photographs, and I also have information from, as an abutter, presented at the zoning board meetings, and also in the, was it 2013, planning board meeting? So, I would like those materials to be accessible to you, as I printed off like maps and other information from NHDES and other sources. So, all of those became part of the original zoning file, so I no longer have the originals. So, tonight, I did ask for the photographs, just so you can see that what is happening here is not a future. This is not a future of what is happening with stormwater on this property. On the front side on Route 4, you've got the Northwood Lake watershed. That is what this property is designated as. On the backside of the property, abutting Old Turnpike Road, you have the Flat Meadow Brook watershed, which is a 3.5-mile brook coming out of Pittsfield. And just reading, and I'm sure some of you are aware of it, it's part of the Big Woods. It's important. Part of Flat Meadow's ability to survive up to this point has been the nature of not having a lot of development in that 3.5-mile stretch. It's a lot of lack of impervious construction soil, roads. It is, in fact, Old Canterbury Road and Old Turnpike Road, which are basically the first times that we see civilization coming into Flat Meadow Brook. And with that occurring, we see more and more water and floodwater occurring. Once again, the lower Flat Meadow section is currently flooding as I stand here. It was about a quarter of the way across Old Turnpike Road, and will probably, because we know that stormwater will crest several hours after the rain ends, so this is a problem. And I kind of commend these people in that they have, they've listened to me. They have, and they've recognized the fact of Old Turnpike Road. They've done additional surveying. I believe, I've got photographs that were beyond their markers on many wet days, particularly with a wet winter day, where we've got snow and ice, other blockage and debris occurring. So, to have that basin up on top is a, it's a catch 22. It's a catch basin, and it's a catch 22. In the cul-de-sac, where you're talking about having a basin, a storage for water and runoff, and that will, some of it will go off towards one side of your property, and the other, you said, would come down towards Flat Meadow Brook. So, if we add any additional flow and water to Flat Meadow Brook, we may be well in... So if we add any additional flow in water to Flat Meadow Brook, we may be well encouraging more flooding, which is expense for the town because when Old Turnpike floods, uh, we lose, um, well, we lose this strip right here. This is prime wetland and right here where Flat Meadow comes across will wash out. On the other side where Flat Meadow crosses, um, a little further down, just off of this property, is the second washout. The second washout is about twenty-five feet from water level. So to have a road wash out at that range, and we've got what, three, I think two, two, at least two additional drain pipes way up in the air and they routinely every year get, the water gets to that point.
So I, I wanna ask a question before you go on.
Sure.
'Cause I'm, I'm a little bit confused about what you're saying and what Naomi said.
Sure.
'Cause Naomi said that they did all their calculations to ensure that whatever is running off the property at any point.
At the property.
At the property line is no different or less than what is there now. So that's my understanding of what they're proposing. And so I'm, I'm wondering, where is your concern coming from? Is it coming from what's happening above the, uh, Old Turnpike Road? Or is it, you know, the changes in weather that we've got more water and we just need to be more cognizant of it?
Well, two things, two things. One, um, calculations can show many things. The beauty of mathematics is to portray and almost torture numbers to say anything. We can look at statistics in either, either regard. So what I'm saying is you do have weather anomalies and I have photographs of weather anomalies in effect of Fort, uh, Flat Meadow Brook. We also have winter seasonal anomalies and actually not anomalies. This is typical for winter down there on Old Turnpike Road. And we also have events that are a combination such as today where we have a seasonal winter. We also have what, temperatures at fifty-three degrees. So you've got a very quick melt-off and you've got a heavy downpour on top of it. Those are perfect conditions for flooding. So if you'll allow me, I'll show you the pictures which represent multiple years and multiple seasons and multiple events.
Okay, but I, I still wanna make sure I understand where you're coming from. Are you making a, I, I, I mean, we have a registered engineer.
Sure.
That did the calculation, so I'm a little more.
No, I'm not, I'm not faulting her calculations. I'm, I'm saying live there.
Yeah, well, yeah, but I, I wanna make sure I understand where you're coming from.
Yep.
Are, are you asking for or suggesting changes in terms of what they do? Are you trying to raise awareness so that maybe for future planning, selectmen?
I told the, the road agent to drive down Old Turnpike Road just now.
Well, that's, yeah, that's.
He's my husband, I can tell him to do that.
Well, and, and that's sort of what I'm getting at. I'm, I'm trying to understand really what you're driving towards. 'Cause if, if it's something where, you know, the selectmen need to think about how the road is built or the culverts on the roads are, that's one thing. But if it's something specific to this, that's what I would like to hear.
Okay. Um, at present, uh, while we could use some work from the town. At present, uh, my concerns, so that's a fair and good question. Uh, my concerns are, uh, the quantity of lots. Um, I see runoff occurring over here. I don't mind traffic and I like salamanders, but I'm not gonna advocate for them. Okay? I, what I see here is we've got a natural runoff area that comes in between these two houses here. This guy's like totally socked every year. So this is going to increase because you're gonna have a roadway surface, driveway, houses, imperious, um.
She's, she is saying no.
And it's coming across, let me continue. It's coming across and it goes right into Flat Meadow Brook, which then comes across the road for the flow. So the flow comes through. Now, looking at these properties here that are on high ledge and seeing that once you start clearing, land clearing, building a house, again imperious, uh, driveways will create runoff to ledge, uh, which will increase the flow onto, onto Flat Meadow Brook. And I can't really speak or advocate, um, for, um, the rest of the abutters other than to say the primary concern was the traffic flow onto Route four. So we had, uh, concerns about the water flow. I'm gonna just do this. And say, so. That when we did the site walk, um, with zoning and planning, um, I as an abutter, it was, it was just zoning 'cause you were only looking at the, uh, the variances on the, the well. And I was in a butter, so I was in a butter that day. I couldn't really speak, so I hung out with the other abutter. Uh, so I couldn't stand there next to problem areas and say, hey, check this out. Uh, that would've been forbidden and you guys know that's not what I did. So we did not point out the problem areas. Uh, we simply started in it and continued walking without really, really taking time to talk about it because we couldn't. We couldn't. So, um, this is my chance to show you what I would've shown you that day.
Okay.
So maybe you just flip them around. You have dates on them. Some of them are, pardon, some of them are simply weather anomalies where we get hit by microbursts or tornadoes, um, which did occur further down and we got, lost a garden and all.
Okay, so what's this?
That's Old Turnpike Road.
Okay.
They're all Old Turnpike Road.
Pass one to your husband.
I just take pictures of pictures.
Yeah. Currently it's, uh, um, right now it's flooding in the Meadow section, which is.
Essentially, uh, where the five-unit townhouse subdivision we did, just below, just beyond that.
Just beyond that, yeah.
Yeah, the, the last new building, it's flooding right beyond there.
Well, probably two tenths of a mile to the right off the, the plan, if I had to estimate length.
These are from the nineteen hundreds.
Nineteen eighties. Uh, when we moved in, there were these huge dump truck piles of gravel on the side of, of, um, Flat Meadow, the Meadow area. And when we moved in, we kept thinking, why are these like six or seven giant piles of gravel here? And why don't they ever spread the gravel out or are they putting it on the road? And then we realized that the gravel had been put there as barricades to keep the water from going over the road. So that was in nineteen eighty-four, um, that flooding and all occurred. So this is not anything to do with modern climate, um, anything to do with that. This has been an ongoing situation. And where you see the roads washed out, um, for the town, um, these houses here were trapped between road washed out here, road washed out here. Literally no emergency services, no one could get to us. For people that live beyond this road washout, they have to come down the road. It's a dead-end road, there is no way out. There is a loopy's escape that one of the landholders has a chain across through the woods and on severe weather and when the road is flooded, he will take the chain down and let us drive through that way. So, yeah, it's kinda weird living in a place where you've got like a, a backup plan. The other backup plan for when Flat Meadow, that region that's currently flooding tonight, um, the backup plan there is to cut through what used to be the dentist office and go around his barn to be able to make it up to Route four. And our, our last top-secret, um, escape route, um, was to.
Wait, you're on tape.
Be in the car, brake for here. So this property here was our escape route. So the, the road surface they were talking about was something that we would leave the vehicle and hoof it across to Route four.
Okay. Bob, may I speak?
Sure.
Uh, well, no, stay, stay up. I'm, I'm just gonna, I'm just gonna say right up front to your face, uh, it sounds to me, I'm, I'm gonna let Naomi respond or I'd like to hear what Naomi has to say. But what I think I'm hearing is not a concern about this property itself. On the supposition. That Naomi has done her calculations correct as a, as a registered engineer, so I'm trusting of that. So I'm gonna say it sounds to me like the concerns aren't necessarily, if, if, if you're willing to accept the premise that Naomi's calculations are good and that the water flow off the site isn't changing as a result of this, it sounds to me like you have a, I think a legitimate concern about the way the road is constructed as opposed to a concern about this development.
And I'm going to say no.
I think she's worried about the impact it may cause on.
On Flat Meadow Brook. Uh, the road is moot other than it washes out from Flat Meadow Brook.
Right, right.
And as Flat Meadow Brook, if you look at the, um, this one here is, uh, National Geographic Society, it's the one I got with you today, so it's two thousand thirteen. And Flat Meadow Brook makes a nearly straight flow down from Pittsfield down to Old Turnpike Road, where it crosses the road and it bangs a left straight through this property. And then it comes back across Route, uh, Old Turnpike Road. So it comes down here just about straight from Pittsfield. And then it hits here, takes a left, comes across, takes another left and then goes up around. Now, I'm not sure if it hits Canterbury Road or close to it.
Okay, but I, I'm still, I still have to say, what, when I hear you talking, I, I think we have to let Naomi respond. Either, either there's no impact from this and the impact is a result.
No additional impact is what I wanna hear.
No what?
No additional impact. I mean, right now, we're battling status quo. I wanna hear, and you have calculations, I wanna hear that, that status quo, that this, whatever, whatever comes of it, whatever comes of this basin, whatever comes of this, that we are taking into consideration that status quo, which isn't good, doesn't get worse. So that there's not additional flow. And I don't think there's guarantees on that. I just don't because of the ledge, because of the quantity of wetlands here, because of the natural storage of water that occurs, the vernal pools or whatever that, that don't have salamanders. All of these things hold water back. And with cutting of trees, putting in driveways, uh, again, homeowners of the future, cutting more trees, uh, people not raking the leaves out of their water pits, you're going to see more and more situations with additional water. So this is my, my question, my problem. Am I advocating against? No, I am not. I'm not advocating against development. I just wanna make sure that we are being really careful here because ultimately it's gonna cost the taxpayers more money to refix the road again if it washes out more frequently than it has done. So this is what I'm, I'm looking for is, is requesting the planning board go with real caution on these facts, figures with the, uh, with the stormwater plan, uh, with, I forgot the other term, forgive me, uh.
Mitigation?
Oh, it's steep slopes. It's deep slopes, stormwater and what was the word?
Mitigation?
Uh, mitigation? Yeah, I think there's situations in there such as all of these various situations that we have had additional water. And again, it's that piece of property right here which swells with water and we need it to do that. So adding additional water to what it's already holding during abnormal water situations, um, well, you know, and when we first met in two thousand thirteen, um, somebody, the engineer, the old woman said, hey, you can just jump across it. It's nothing. Or you could drive a car across it. And it's like, no, you can't.
No.
Not year-round. So I mean, in, in times of drought or, or, uh, low water, you might have a very small stream there. But looking at it right now, until you've tied a rope around your husband's waist and had him try to get across to get his pickup truck, you haven't really lived on Old Turnpike Road.
Just as a, just as a reminder, this is public comment and no response is needed. This is our chance to listen.
Well, I was responding because I was trying to make sure I understand, understood what you're saying.
And I also request that the previous testimony, or not testimony, but previous abutter comments and zoning board, 'cause they did a fine job also, um, you know, that we, uh, that you look at those and look at the materials submitted with it. Um, also keeping in mind that they are working with us on Flat Meadow Brook. It's just the concern of, are we doing enough or are they doing enough?
The other thing, one of the recommendations or not, well, that's not the right word, uh, options for the planning board is a peer review of the stormwater management plan. So is that what you were?
No.
Okay, go ahead.
I just wanted to state for the record, uh, for transparency that, uh, I am not in a butter, but I do live on Old Turnpike Road and Flat Meadow Brook is three-quarters of my property boundary. And some of those photos are actually of my property that were submitted by, in a butter.
So do you tie a rope to your husband too?
He doesn't check the mail.
I keep them both parked out.
And I can add, verified from my own experience because Flat Meadow Brook runs through my, my, another abutter's property uh, of mine, it is considered a, a seasonal stream. It is not a, or, it is not considered a perennial stream. It does dry up.
I said we put the pressure on the staff person.
I asked. I asked it.
I'm thinking they need to, they need to pay for a culvert system for the road.
I think it was DES.
It's not their fault.
It's always.
They're gonna sell two more lots, it's gonna make more problems in the road.
It just makes more people can't get out.
Well, anyway. What I was told, uh, years ago, I think when we bought the place in two thousand nine, uh, was that Flat Meadow stream, uh, is not perennial in the fact that it does not flow extreme, at extremely low, or times of drought. There's no fish above, uh, the, um, crossing on, uh, Old Canterbury Road.
Okay, well, I can only tell you since nineteen eighty-two, going back to that point, it was a, it, it ran year-round. When the development was put in on Old Turnpike Road, trees were cut, houses were put in and it completely changes the, uh, the flow of the stream because the rain comes down, it runs off, it made it go quick and it, it runs out fast.
Well, and just for clarification, Linda lives downstream from where I, yeah. And it's, it, it does dry up from above me and my property is to the north of this, off the map.
So you can get through in August?
Not necessarily. Oh, yes, I can get through in August.
Not this August. Not this past August.
I would still have to put my, my kit boots on to wait through the line.
So, Al, I answered your questions.
Yeah, I, I just wanted to make sure I really understand and really, I guess, to, to paraphrase, you have problems even without this going in.
Right.
And you just wanna be really sure that what we're doing here doesn't make it worse.
I don't, I, it's, it's not traffic or having a neighbor.
Yeah.
I certainly, you know, if I have a neighbor, I'm gonna help save their life too.
Thank you.
They can pull the rope, yeah. But it's the idea of you've got a bad situation, so let's not make it worse. And I wanted the planning board to really be aware of it and, and look for it because what we did on the site walk was, um, looking at specifics that were under zoning consideration. So there wasn't the opportunity to say, hey, if you were standing here at various times of the year, you'd be up to your neck.
Good.
I guess my concerns are that we're depending upon people to rake out leaves every time. Now that, that's gonna be important that the people are doing their leaves. Now we're adding another job to the highway department to rake up, you know, to that, that whole area by the road. Yeah. And then you're adding all that more plowing, yes, but now we're adding an area that they know is gonna be an issue.
Well, it doesn't, not necessarily plowing. Have you decided whether this will be a public or a private road?
The discussion has been to, to make it a town road.
I understood that it could only be a town road. I weren't understand that. I weren't understand that.
That was my assumption as well.
Yeah, I don't think it can be a private road. I don't think our regulations allow it.
I don't think, I think there are too many lots.
Meet zoning.
Oh, for crying...
Yeah, they have to have the frontage, yeah.
Yeah, that's what I was just gonna say too, they need the frontage.
Yeah.
I just wanted to make one more comment.
Sure, we haven't closed it.
I just wanted to say to come in for the planning board, just to be the one, you know, I was sitting there thinking I was like Don Quixote. And I don't want town people or for the record to know that when you stand here, you're not Tom, you're not, you're not Don Quixote. You're not pitching against wind bills, you people are listening. And you actually, right now, I feel like Tom Brady, so...
No, there you go.
Anyway, but I just wanted to say that, so thank you.
Thank you.
Okay. Public comment is still open. If you would like to speak, please feel free to do so at this time.
Two of the folks in the audience. Are you gentlemen...
They're with them as well.
Yep, one is the owner and one is another employee, I believe, and...
Okay, okay, I just wanted to make sure.
Just double checking. Since there are no other members of the public here, I will close public comments, subject to reopening as need be. Thank you, Ms. Anderson. Okay. And as I said before, there is no need, you certainly are welcome to reply if you don't feel obligated to do so.
Can I just...
You can if you want to.
I would like to say two little things.
Sure.
One is just, I realize the concern, somebody mentioned about the maintenance of the areas and the leaf raking. Just to clarify, the areas that I had mentioned that are the small depressions on the lots are not impacting Flat Meadow Brook. Those do not contribute to that particular watershed. So you have a legitimate concern, but it shouldn't have an impact to Flat Meadow Brook. The second thing I just wanted to say about our software that we use to do the stormwater modeling, it's widely accepted, it's TR-55, it's a very common method. And unfortunately, one of the shortcomings is that it does not have the ability to model events like we've had today. So for example, when we have two feet of snow on the ground and then we get 60 degrees and it's raining, and you know, it just, it can't account for those types of natural situations.
It wasn't made in New England, I guess.
That's right. So I understand those concerns, but unfortunately, we don't have a way to model those accurately. Thank you.
May I ask a question? So, let me ask it a different way, just to understand a little bit. So when we say that the flow off of that watershed area, so to speak, is gonna be the same as it is now or less, how accurate do you think those calculations are? In other words, you know, let me ask a different question, maybe, how close are you to, if one is what we are now, what do your calculations show with the changes? Are we at .98, are we at .95?
We generally take it out for flow rates, we take it out to the first decimal place.
Right, but...
That being said, you're asking about the accuracy of the model. Drainage evaluation in general, there is a margin of error. It's obviously, you know, it depends on the person who puts together the model. There are decisions that are made. People could look at a topography and...
I'm asking a different question. So when you do your calculations for this particular one...
Yep.
Did it come out one or did it come out at .98 of what we're... In other words, you said the flow coming off that area will be the same or less? So was it the same? Did your calculation show it was the same or did it show a significantly less?
I believe at all the points of compliance, it was slightly under.
Just slightly under.
Slightly less.
Okay.
But again, that's within the tolerances of the model.
Okay, okay. But in no cases, your model showed it over? Okay. So I guess, Bob, the other thought, if everybody's using the same software, I'm not sure you're gonna get a different answer if you ask somebody else to do the calculation.
That's something to consider. And it's really, it's up to the board as to whether you want to have a peer review of the stormwater management calculations. I'm certainly, I mean, to be arrogant and self-important...
No.
I've got more experience in engineering calculations, I think, than anybody else on the board, but it's not my job. So I'm certainly going to trust the PE license or engineering license to say, yes, you are making the proper assumptions, there's been the proper calculations, all that fun stuff. That being said, in this, I can't speak from experience, there are assumptions that I make as an engineer or as a professional that might not be, they are correct in my frame of reference, in my experience.
Oh, that's interesting.
They might not be someone else's experience. And that can affect the calculations of the TR-55. And that's one of the reasons why there is such a thing as peer review. And if we decide to go that way for stormwater, it might be that your calculations, we can have two correction, two correct analyses. And it's a matter of saying, okay, that's why we have lawyers as well. Now, somebody makes an analysis and it's like, yes, and from this frame of reference, it's correct. From this frame of reference and this set of assumptions, they are both correct. It's a matter of then if they are, and we hope not, if they're competing or there are differences, then we as a board need to decide which ones we like or which ones we are accepting and go back to some kind of compromise or difference or something like that. We're not there yet, certainly.
Yeah.
It is something to think about. We also have, you know, Ms. Anderson's comments about the impacts lower down.
Mr. Chair, can I just point out, a third-party review wouldn't be another engineer looking at this site afresh and doing their own set of calculations.
Right, it would be...
They would be looking at the calculations provided and deciding whether the assumptions and the calculations are reasonable. So it wouldn't be a second...
Correct.
...set of information and we hope that they both come out positive. It would be somebody else just saying, yes, I think this is a reasonably accurate assessment of the situation.
So it gets back to your point of view or reference point.
It's the flow chart. You make a certain set of assumptions that beat in the TR-55. If those set assumptions are...
Good.
I wasn't gonna pass judgment on it, but reasonable. The peer review would say, yes, this is reasonable. If the peer review comes back saying, well, yes, this is reasonable, but there are additional ones to be considered, or you know, this is on the edge, or you know, outside of, you know, the belt curve around the tips and tails, you know, then that might, if you run it through TR-55, then it might come out with an impact. I just took it a little too far.
Could I also add that the state, the alteration of terrain permit, their purview is the stormwater, so they will be reviewing it pretty thoroughly.
I was gonna say, do we get a second opinion from the state? Okay, I'm gonna ask...
It's a lot beyond, you know, stormwater is definitely something beyond the ability of this board to take a look at.
I'm just gonna ask one other question, just, and don't go into a lot of detail, but for example, if you thought you were close on this, what types of things would you have to consider on these two lots? Would that be stuff like more basins or stuff like that?
There is the possibility that you could, we could put in another depression, a small depression that might require additional clearing.
Yes, there's some trade-offs.
You know, there's always some trade-offs. And one of the challenges with stormwater controls is that you're generally clearing to create them, so you're in essence exacerbating your problem that you have to deal with. So certainly there are things that we could do if we needed to. That culvert that crosses the road there, I believe is only a 12-inch culvert as well, so that is acting as a control.
No, no.
Those two lots right there.
I'm talking about these two lots up here, Bob, up at the top. Your left hand as far as you can reach.
Tiptoe.
Lot 11 and 12.
All the way up.
Yeah, yeah.
So I think that's an existing...
Because I think that's where she was talking about, you know, most of the concern. I mean, I can sort of imagine most of the waters coming down here is coming down regardless, but here, she was expressing some concern.
Right.
Second period.
Huh? Yeah. So there, yeah, so there'd be some trade-offs in terms of what you would want to even consider there. And some of this flows actually the other way, huh? If I'm looking at the slide.
Right, there's a wedge there.
It looks like it's flowing away from Flat Meadow Brook.
This C1...
Yes.
Is flowing towards Old Turnpike Road, going to that 12-inch culvert eventually.
Where's that 12-inch culvert, I'm sorry?
Can you see it on there?
Where is it on, show me on yours and I'll find it. Oh, maybe here. Oh, okay, I see it, yeah.
Can you see it? So I believe this is what Pam was saying goes...
It floods the ten lane.
So it basically goes between, once it goes through the culvert, it goes between those two lots and eventually ends up back in Flat Meadow Brook.
It does end up back there. Okay, so ultimately, it's going there now and it's not gonna change going there as a result of this, but to her concern, if it goes faster, it might make that a little bit worse. And that's what she's worried, let's make sure we're not making it worse.
Correct.
Okay, I think I understand competing now. Thank you for your patience.
That's why we have these meetings. Okay. Anything else that you want to cover tonight?
I don't think so.
Okay. Let me see, so I think I heard you saying next time you'll have roadway analysis, is that right? No, no, sorry.
The waiver request.
Waiver request.
Yeah. Okay, just double checking what we have.
The main waiver would be whether or not we...
The length of road.
The length of road.
And then we also have the, we have, I think, the lot dimensions, at least one is definitely narrower than 100 feet wide, and then there are four or five other lots that could be problematic if you're interpreting that provision a certain way because they come to points or there's a cutout lot. So if they're requesting the waiver, I would suggest just requesting it to cover all lots as shown, so that we make sure there are no problems down the road with somebody interpreting one of those differently.
And we, you know, we believe we meet the intent of what the ordinance is trying to prove there or prevent there. But we'll explain that.
Okay.
Mr. Chair, if I could suggest, if the board isn't going to make a decision on peer review of stormwater and the traffic analysis tonight, that you consider having that discussion at the next meeting, just so that we have it as early in the process as possible and we don't have that holding on to a decision of approval.
I don't necessarily need to delay that discussion if the board wants to here to think about it tonight for a peer review of stormwater and traffic. But it doesn't necessarily have to be tonight.
I'd like to think about it a little bit more before we have that discussion, if the others are amenable. If you feel like we want to make a decision tonight, I'll hear the discussion. But I personally prefer to wait.
Recommendation, I bet I'm fine if the board wants to wait till next month.
What would your preference be? Would you prefer we discuss it tonight and try to come to some conclusion or would you... I'd prefer to give some thought.
I guess, and I didn't mean to interrupt you, we're fine either way.
We're gonna hold you up.
Not that I gotta give it an awful lot of weight, but as far as timeframe for potential construction, are you looking at this for potentially this summer, for this construction season, or anybody lined up?
I would have to defer to Mr. Eames.
You're welcome to do so.
It's not pressing for the summer, I'd be nice.
Okay.
Appreciate the thought.
Thank you for your candor. That has come into effect in other applications, which is why I asked. You know, bonds and construction money, it's really not subdivision, but you know, if you have people who are lined up and ready to go and we're dragging our feet, I don't want to make sure that, I want to make sure we're not dragging our feet.
At my understanding, probably that AOT one is gonna be dragging their feet worse than you guys.
Alteration of three.
I'd take that, yeah, okay. In that case, is there a general sense to the board that we're okay waiting till next meeting for peer review decisions?
I'm fine either way, it's fine.
What's your concern with the peer review?
I'd just like to think a little bit more and go back and noodle on some of the other cases where we said we weren't gonna do the peer review because we thought the alteration of terrain would give us a sort of secondary check on some of these things. It might not be to the exact minutia that some of these other calculations were done, but I thought that we had some other cases where we felt comfortable enough that the alteration of terrain would catch sort of what she was speaking to, any sort of overarching or, you know, overall problems. And I'd just like to, I mean, we can have the discussion now and then maybe we can make a decision. There was at least a couple since I've been on the board where we've had that discussion.
There was a recent case within the last two years.
There's one.
One?
Was there just one?
It was Johnson's.
It was Johnson's. In that case, staff made the recommendation that it be peer reviewed and the board decided that it didn't need to be.
Thank you.
Well, I think that's good information too.
Oh, you and I.
Yes, we strongly agree with that. One thing I just want to say, just a perspective, what I have seen over the years of the projects that have been peer reviewed, and up until that case, it was typical practice for anything of this size, especially that involves, you know, a future town road, that it would be peer reviewed. Not to question the integrity of the person that's done it, but what oftentimes will come back is just sometimes, well, what if this was this way instead of that way? Because our engineer is going to be looking at what's best for the town of Northwood for now and into the future where these folks are hired by the person presenting the plan.
Correct.
And it's not that you get a lot of change necessarily, sometimes it is, but I can remember the two subdivisions up off of Low Lake Road, Sherburne Hill, there were some good ideas that came back and the two engineers worked through it and some changes were made, concerns addressed.
That's been a case.
And it's, you know, two professionals that have different design ideas, but sometimes that helps to come out with the best final design for the future for everybody.
Well, and she's expressed some concern and maybe just the added assurance from that perspective would let folks sleep a little better at night. But I do have to say, you know, I'm a little bit concerned about the cost too. I mean, how much are we thinking about spending here for...
The cost is not the concern of the planning board. The cost, the planning board should be concerned with knowing that when you put your... The cost, the planning board should be concerned with knowing that when you put your signature on this plan, that you have done a thorough job to make sure that for this development in this new road and everything that's involved in it is the best for the future of Northwood. Yes, these folks, but it's going to cost them for that review. But we also don't want to cross the town of Northwood or any homeowner. It's a matter of due diligence.
So would we, is up for discussion and analysis of all the calculations or just the ones affecting the flow through Flat Meadow Brook?
All the calculations.
All the calculations.
The other thing I want to address, sort of the elephant that we have not addressed, and it might impact our decision on peer review, is the, and I don't say this is criticism, yet to be received waiver for the thousand-foot aspect. Because if the, if that waiver is not granted, then this design is, let's say.
Move point.
I won't say it's not null and void, but there is a significant deficiency if that waiver is not granted and it will need to be revisited, which will most likely impact a lot of other design aspects. And I would rather not put the cart before the horse of saying, yes, we're going to grant, have peer review on this and then have the board decide that, no, we're not granting waiver requests, which would significantly change the plan and expend that money we're needlessly, needlessly.
So you think we need to do the waiver consideration first?
That makes sense.
Okay, okay, I agree.
And I'm, I think the applicant will appreciate that. Sure. Yes. We have not addressed it, and I know you're going to address it next month. The problem comes in, well, I shouldn't call it so much of a problem. It'll be on board then after we hear your presentation next month on the waiver that we need to decide that evening, to be fair, to keep this going, uh, whether we want to grant that waiver or not.
Okay.
Okay, the problem, let me continue on that and flip my brain around, or the other side thing that's running through my head, is that, and I don't want an answer to this, peer review of the design might present an option for resolving that waiver that isn't. What I'm willing to do though is let's wait till next month, give you a chance to make your argument in terms of the, the thousand-foot previous, or entrance, single point of entrance. Have the board discuss it, deliberate on whether we want to grant that waiver or not, and then decide what we want to do with peer review.
Okay.
So be thinking of it there.
That gives me time to think.
Got your head.
Okay. I already have. Does that seem fair to you, trying to? I know there's a lot of work that went into this, but there's that, still that drill light in the room that we want to draft, um, which you will do so next month. That'll give us another chance to, to, with, think about it ourselves. Very good. Okay? Anything else from the board tonight?
Oh, very good, thank you.
Anything else from town staff on this? Thanks for your touch.
Thank you.
See you next month.
I would just make you come in.
That's what?
I would just make you come in.
Yeah, well, that's okay. I like to do.
There's going to be other ones that might.
Yeah, I know.
It might, I don't, it's just tracking people down.
Yep. Okay.
Yeah, it was, now, I, I'm just curious, what are you going to do with that drawing?
I'm just rolling it up to.
It's Linda's, Linda did, I started coloring.
You're going to leave it here?
Yes, oh yeah. Okay.
Do they know we're having a meeting here tonight?
Pardon?
They know we're having a meeting here tonight?
Um, we'll give.
Can you pause that, Gary?
Want to get this meeting under control?
Why don't we take a five-minute recess?
See, that's good.
How about that? We're back at eight thirty-seven for recess. I was late in getting my copy of the town report out to the board and to Linda. Pardon?
Hi, Linda.
Thank you for reading it. Um, I, I always started a couple of years ago, uh, that I had not sent it out until actually I submitted for Linda and some members of the board asking for a copy of it since their name, so I tried to send it out ahead of time. This one mentioned a, a little more personal on it. If you have a chance to read it, can you read it second?
I haven't seen it.
I saw it, but I trusted you.
Pardon?
I saw it, but I trusted you.
Okay, well, essentially you just said.
You should read it, it's good.
Something affected it, I've been serving 10 years, might have, have applied, but I still have fun. I think I thanked the town staff for their hard work on, uh, zoning amendments. James and I just chatted a bit, I'm going to delete the detail on all the types of cases for site plans and just say we had, I think, eight site plan reviews, three subdivisions, whatever else, and then whatever.
You would probably just come, we had 20 numbered cases this year. And I think this spreadsheet you showed may have one carryover from last year, so the number should add to 21.
Yes, whatever, yeah, yeah, definitely, that, that kind of math.
So you mean like major, minor, and?
Usually I split them out.
Yeah, okay.
I'm pulling numbers off the top of my head, so don't quote me as being accurate, but yes, I think there were 21 and, you know, eight, eight of these, five of those.
Right, okay.
Whatever else. Just the, the types of, you know, major, minor, just say we had three subdivisions, we had five site plan reviews and one.
You want that stuff out, is what you're saying?
Yes, I'll, I'll send you a new copy.
No.
How about I send you my?
Okay.
How about she tweaks it?
Try to go, whoop, whoop.
Yeah, yeah, that's fine, that's fine.
I think she's hitting the good line here.
Actually, you can just delete the stuff in parentheses.
Okay, that's what I was going to say.
But then add to it that we, we'll add to it that we had, what do I want to call it? One request for reconsideration and one.
Oh.
James's comments.
I think I only sent them to you.
Okay.
With 91A, so that it did not constitute a meeting by email.
Right, right, right.
But, yeah.
We had a request for consideration and a, uh, request for a public hearing for the fire station.
Notice of a governmental use of land.
So we had.
I wouldn't say the town was asking for a public hearing and the board decided not to hold one, but.
Just as types of cases.
So, I just have one question, the, the case that was here tonight before us, it's listed as a new case, but I thought we talked about it before.
We talked about consideration for it or completeness.
We couldn't really talk. Just look and ask.
So we couldn't really discuss anything because it was just complete this.
Yes. It was on the agenda for last month because they submitted their.
Were you here that night or Justin was here that night?
Yes.
I did miss.
Okay, maybe it was at one time.
Okay, I understand now. I, I thought I remember seeing that.
He took December off.
Okay.
Oh, you did.
So anyway, what do we need to do to finish up?
We need to finish up the town report.
Hal, besides the last question you had, you promised was the last.
Okay.
I'll put that.
Thank you, Betty. Thank you, Betty. Let the record show, I'm not asking any more questions, am I?
You did say you wanted to go home.
Yes, anyway, um, those of you, are people okay with the town report with a little more tweaking, like I indicated?
Thank you for doing that.
That's our only job responsibilities.
It's all your chair.
That's why we list the big blocks.
Yeah, that's really.
At least you get an A tag.
I think I left them from the budget committee.
I do, but I couldn't find it anymore, but that's okay. I've never had one in 10 years and I don't need one anymore, no need to change.
Yeah, we know who you are.
Right, yeah, and you keep your.
Well, most of these came from budget anyway.
Right.
You don't have a name tag?
Can you put that in the budget for next year?
They had our names taped on them.
Yeah, okay.
Now everyone can have a nice wooden one. Great, you want one, you can.
But the, you're okay with sending that to the town, town report?
Yeah.
Yeah, thank you.
Sure. I have drawings to sign.
More drawings?
Which need to be signed and I like to do that during the meeting.
You sign, we don't sign, do we?
Correct, I already signed it.
While you're doing that, can I tell you a reminder that we're. The other side?
You signed these last time.
I signed these a month ago. Over a month ago.
Okay, well, that one quick.
I got more.
That's a quick signing.
I got more, because I thought they were.
They did sign it.
Is there mylar in there?
The mylar, it's the mylar.
Okay.
That's okay. I don't mind.
Moving right along.
I, uh, sent out a reminder that we're in the filing period for anyone who wants to.
Correct.
Sign up for planning board.
Yes, and I believe Hal and Joe are, your terms are up in March.
Uh, I am not.
You don't have to declare anything.
Okay.
It's just, it is just a reminder.
Okay, thank you.
Yes. Um, but I always like people to know, uh, whether they, when their terms are up, so they're not surprised.
There's some correspondence if you want to.
Oh, yep.
Maybe a wife or a girl.
Do we have anything significant?
That has to be the rule, you got to find someone else.
Oh, there's an interesting thing about culverts in there, that came to quite a few departments in town.
Oh, from, uh, from DOT?
You don't want to get your head glued to something.
Culvert replacement on. Where is that? Culvert replacement on an unnamed tributary of Narrows Brook, under Route 107.
Say that again.
New Hampshire DOT is planning a culvert replacement project here in unnamed tributary of Narrows Brook, under Route 107. See, New Hampshire 107, see attached map. Replacing an existing five-foot-high, seven-foot-wide corrugated metal pipe with, uh, 12-inch corrugated metal pipe.
What?
They're putting metal back in instead of plastic?
Oh, no, it will include a replacement of a C and, of 12-inch additional.
We know about this? There are no unnamed brooks.
Where that is, no.
We haven't.
Well, maybe they just don't know that.
They said they had a map.
It's in there.
Is this the attached?
No, it's not.
Oh. And was that with, because that was just on top of the.
Oh, well, that was, is there more in there? Because I think.
Oh, maybe it.
That was, I don't know, it came from Heather, our town administrator.
No, that's, that's just a wetlands.
I want to see the map.
Bailey Engineering.
He needs the map.
Got to see the map.
Want to color code it?
They're saying it's two culverts.
It says it went to, like, there's a little.
It's not in the box.
But I'm just thinking.
No, that was a little on top of all of my stuff, so I just.
It would be on the way to Pittsburgh. I'm just trying to think of where culverts are in Narrows Brook.
Well, it's a tributary thereof.
Right, I know, unnamed, but.
But I think it's named. If we ask Steve Bailey, he'll have a name for it.
Bailey Brook.
No, it won't be Bailey Brook.
On 107?
Yeah, because.
But 107's all of Main Street and then it goes all the way up.
No, it's not Main Street.
Main Street is not 107.
Oh, that's, that's right, School Street is, right?
Yes, yes. But that, what goes under there is the brook itself.
That's the brook itself.
So the unnamed tributary could be maybe near West Street or something like that.
There's a little brook.
West Street under there.
Oh, look.
Yeah.
We need to know.
Yeah, yeah.
Do you draw a map?
I, I drive there every day and I, I don't want to go under, over unnamed brook.
I don't know these things.
And I'm going to petition the Slideman to name it.
Boudreaux Brook.
Goes up in there.
West Street?
No.
High Street.
Yeah, that's what I'm saying, we'll petition the Slideman to name it. Oh, oh, she can just do it herself.
I did.
Left that connects to West Street.
Oh. Well, then we just need to know where it is.
Nothing connects to West Street.
There you go. Is that where West Street comes out?
That's what I was saying, I think it's where West Street is.
There's a, there's a little brook though, like, behind, you know, the, um, the, the community center.
Right.
Yeah, that's what we're talking about, that's what I'm talking about.
Oh, she has the map.
Save us from guessing.
Yeah, wow.
Wait, now.
Yeah, it's Kelsey Brook.
Kelsey?
What's the culvert?
So where is it?
We're, we're going to have to give them the copy of the report, the Big Woods report, so they can get the names and the pictures right.
Well, Heather brought it in, she was.
Yes. It is right beside the community center, just north of the community center.
Or right behind it?
Yeah.
Yeah, right behind the community center between West Street.
Yeah.
So, okay.
Okay.
It could be Boudreaux Brook, it's right by my house.
We'll get you, we'll get a name for you, Bob.
It could be, that's where my kids just go fishing.
Don't, don't worry, we'll have a name.
You'll have fishing here. We can fish up this big. There's a little bridge that goes across the back of our yard to the next yard.
Okay. I don't think so, I think it was just a notice.
Sit there on the bridge and go fishing, that's a big deal for my kids.
Questions about history of, yes, yeah, there's open questions on the back.
There are questions on the back.
Yeah.
Do I beat problems in there?
Again, sorry.
So now we're going to have to use that little cutoff room.
Oh, yeah, this, I can make a copy of this on.
So how are they going to run the traffic there, because there's no way around there?
Well, that's where I was going, engineering, let me see.
They're going to have to make that one-way a two-way.
Some transportation projects regarding mitigation for possible wetland stream impacts.
So they're doing it right under School Street, right where the little post offices?
Oh, that's by the.
No, it's on Main, it's on 107.
School Street's 107, we just said that.
It's not on School Street, it's on Main Street.
It's on Main Street.
It's School Street and you turn the corner.
Yeah.
Going uphill.
Yeah.
Before the dog leg.
Real sharp turn to the right. So. They're going to have to make that little triangle.
To assist this evaluation, I'm asking that you provide comments relative to the project's potential impacts on environmental, social, economic, or cultural resources by responding to the following questions. Does the town have a list of priority mitigation efforts that the DOT may evaluate and blah, blah, blah? Any existing proposed or community or regional plans that might have a bearing on this project? Natural resources, cultural resources of significance in the vicinity, public parks, recreation area, cultural lands, wildlife, waterfall, refuges in the vicinity, locally, regionally significant water resources.
Ooh.
I'm just paraphrasing and pulling out words, water quality concerns, existing or potentially hazardous materials or contaminants in the vicinity, asbestos landfills, or asbestos containing utility pipes, uh, environmental concerns not previously noted, have any significant impact on the surrounding area, aware of any existing roadside populations of non-native invasive plant species, yes. Yes.
How about just a school bus getting through, how are they gonna do that?
I have no idea.
Right, 'cause.
Well, it, usually for a culvert.
Usually that's gonna be in the summer, so.
But there's always school buses, they're summer school.
Go on a case like this, what I would think they would do, and I'm making speculation here, is that they would barricade off or put cones up on one oh seven at the top of hill and send traffic both ways, have a cop for traffic directions up and down High Street.
They're gonna have to get a selectman to approve that.
It is definitely one way, but if you have somebody barricading and you have a traffic officer saying, yes, you can't go down and radio for traffic control, that would be my suspicion. The alternate would be, that they typically do is they close one lane, replace the culvert for one lane, open it back up. And then work on the other side, but that's construction issues.
If you like the first one, they probably won't do that one.
If the board wants, they could authorize me to respond to this if they don't wanna respond themselves or I think the board of selectmen also have gotten a copy of it.
Public DJ has it.
I would like to suggest we give them a copy of the Great Woods Report because that covers all this area. Did you hear that, Linda?
No, I did not.
Oh, sorry, because I'm hoping you have a copy of it.
I have a copy.
The Great Woods Report, because it covers this and it asks about, you know.
Cultural wildlife.
We actually have, we actually have it scanned in now.
Yes.
Ooh, electronic copy.
I'll put, I'm gonna put it on the web.
Oh, please, but do you have any hard copies too?
I have one.
I don't know, somebody.
Carl has one.
We got, we only got like a dozen or fifteen.
Well, we gotta put the pressure on Carl, he's got them.
Oh, okay.
Carl woman.
As far as I know, one, but we.
Check with Carl and see what he says, but I, I think, you know, that at least gives folks an overview and, you know, maybe there's something that, that they pick up on that is useful.
Oh, you're saying gives that to them, yeah.
Yeah, yeah, because they asked for a economic. Yeah, I mean, it's, well, it's as good as information as we got. It's consolidated and covers the whole area there.
So this went to cap, to town administrator.
Everybody that is.
Who got it?
Yeah, if you flip the page right there, do you see the, at the bottom?
Oh, it's been sent to, yes, board of selectmen, planning board, town administrator, fire department, police department, road agent, conservation commission, historian. Okay.
Historian.
So this would cover the historian too?
Yeah, well, cultural.
Yeah, yeah, but the report I'm talking about will cover all that.
So I'm happy to respond to this for the, for the board if we would, if you authorize me to do so.
So I'm moved.
I don't have to, if somebody else wants to. Okay, all those in favor?
I.
Those abstaining, I'm abstaining.
Okay.
I'm happy to respond to this, I'll take a copy and.
Hal, Betty, I think.
Yes, four in favor, one abstention.
But I would appreciate if you'd give them a copy of that report.
Oh, yeah, definitely, that's a good idea.
Do you want me to email it or, well, to be.
Yeah, email me, yeah, please email me a copy and I can, because I'd like a copy anyway. I have a hard copy, but I've always wanted to be able to take it excerpts. And what I might do, Hal, for this is excerpt out or just call out sections of that report to include, to say, here's this applicable to question number nine, but here's a copy of the whole thing.
Yeah, yeah, I think that's fair.
I think there are some that are applicable, some that I can answer, others that I can't, but someone else in town can.
I might give them some additional background.
Yep, okay, but I'll take a copy of that before I go.
Is that just for review, they don't decide anything?
Yeah, just information on a wetlands drain and fill, air dredge and fill wetlands application that we got for one sixty two Lindgrove Road, Northwood. Oh.
I, I think it's a dock perimeter or something.
Yeah, existing sandy.
It's something on the water.
For the conversion of an existing sandy beach to a perched beach. A perched beach.
Oh, okay. That's where they catch perch instead of something.
Okay.
Yeah, that's, that's.
This is all that goes with it, okay.
Filled with beached perch.
We've done it. Pardon?
His was even better.
Say that again?
A perched beach filled with beached perch.
James hasn't gotten.
No, that would be icky.
That would be sticky.
He's a little stirk, like.
You are sleep deprived, aren't you?
Yeah.
That's good, builds character.
Does it?
Land of Rainboth, Rainboth revocable trust.
Mine must be quite the character.
Looks like they're adding a twenty four by twenty eight roof.
Well, do you know if the Big Woods people have many of those left themselves or?
Well, not to air dirty laundry too much, I called Carl and asked for some more copies and I didn't get them. I don't know whether he has them and forgot.
No, I, I talked, I talked to him after the meeting about it.
Yeah, my guess is he has, has some, we just gotta pray him from him.
Okay.
Because aren't we, aren't we due half of them? I thought that was the agreement.
Yes.
Yeah, so let's get them.
Well, I don't know that we're due half of them, the conservation commission voted to fund the cost of half of them, but I don't know that there was ever an agreement that we were, they were supporting the distribution of them, but we were not, it was not ever stated that we were getting fifty percent of them.
Check the record on that, because I think I made that motion at the conservation.
At the conservation commission? Okay, Hal, I know you have a lot of halves, but.
Yes.
You're not on that board.
No, 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 I, I thought.
We'll talk about it after the meeting.
Talk about it afterward.
Yeah, sorry.
I have one minute.
Yeah, go ahead.
Okay, anything else tonight?
Motion to adjourn.
Second.
No vote needed, we're adjourned at eight fifty nine.